Good evening. I'd like to call our May meeting of the Charlotte School Board of Directors to order. First of all, let me ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda for this evening? Okay. And we don't have an audience this evening, so we won't have input from an audience. There are no presentations for this evening, so we can move right to reports to the board. Barbara Ann, would you like to start?
Certainly. So a few highlights that I want to point out from the principal's report include, one, the CCS MTSS initiative. So the MTSS stands for Multi Tiered System of Supports, and that's been an initiative that we had taken on this past year for the goal to help every student be given what they need. And we have completed our first year, and the teachers were tremendous. We have so much to celebrate in the work that the teachers have done. There were three parts to that initiative, and one of the pieces was to have teachers collaborate with each other to talk about student work for the purposes of differentiating. And that is happening on a regular basis with all the teams. Another piece of that initiative was to have teachers identify a time in their week where they would work as a team and add in some of the coaches to provide some differentiated instruction outside of the regular core subject area lessons. And then the third was to streamline our systems and protocols. We did do a survey to get input from the staff, to learn what their thoughts were, and the input was invaluable. Lots of things that are positive and things that we're going to grow it as we move into our second year. But so much to celebrate.
Great.
One other piece that I wanted to highlight is about the pre-K. I know that it was asked about at one of the other meetings, and you asked for me to come back with a little more information. So as you may recall, Julia Wayne, the pre-K teacher, who is housed in Heinsburg, also serves Charlotte students. And in addition, she comes to Charlotte to offer a playgroup once a week on Wednesdays for about an hour. And it has been serving a need that we've identified of keeping people in Charlotte connected to her preschool program, as well as to be able to be aware of what children might be out there and introduce them to Charlotte. So she said that there's been about 10 different children who have come over the year, and at each time, there's about six of them. And they do a lot of music and song and storytelling, and she does puppets and motor play. I have been in a number of times and joined in the singing and the dancing as well. The children really love playing the instruments and being engaged with Julia, as well as their own caretaker who's there. Julia mentioned that this has also been a positive way for them to do something called Child Find, which is identify many children have any needs. So it's been productive on a number of fronts. So we feel going into next year, it'll grow probably even more word of mouth, as well as we advertise, will just spread to get more kids to show up. There was one other topic that you wanted us to address, which is around looping, and I'm going to pass it over to Stephanie, who has prepared some information to share.
So that has come up quite a bit with our placement process going on right now. In the history of us still having several looping teams right now, that largely came out of the configuration committee study that was done in 2012, 2013 with Greg Marino and Audrey Buta. There were several staff members and community members. And they engaged in a pretty in-depth process, soliciting feedback, doing surveys, reviewing research, getting input from teachers, getting input from staff, and getting input from students. And coming out of that, that determined that they would stay within the configurations that we have right now, the looping teams, for the following five years, which takes us into next year. And so next year, in 2017, 2018, largely in the fall, we will reconvene, ask for committee membership from the community, from staff, get student input as well, to go through a very similar process, which is reviewing more current research, particularly knowing that within these five years, there have been significant changes like Common Core, Next Generation Science Standards. We've also gone to full-time kindergarten within those five years. So what came out of that study was that, in terms of staff, 59% of the staff that responded preferred the looping models. The reasons cited were building and maintaining relationships between students, with students, and with families. 52% of parent respondents preferred looping, and 30% were neutral to looping. So not really one way or the other. And some of the feedback that we got anecdotally was that parents of younger students preferred looping more than parents of older students. And they really highlighted academic benefits of teachers really knowing their child, particularly after year one, and just going into year two and really taking off. The biggest concern raised was just limited contact with a more diverse group of students over time, if the group stayed somewhat static in two consecutive loops. The survey also included data from CBU's ninth and 10th graders at that time, as well as the CCS middle school students. And largely, the feedback there was that students felt like looping had been a very good experience for them, citing connections with teachers, stronger connections with peers, but also identifying that at times, there were some social challenges within that. We've been having conversations around looping a lot within the last couple of years, particularly within K4, because those are our 1-2 teams loop and our 3-4, and then 7-8 is more of a multi-year experience with specialization. So, you know, the pros of looping, I think, still largely stay the same, although we will be looking at more current research, which the primary, you know, positive aspect is the relationship over time with students and families. Understanding and responding to student needs over time, being able to make, if needed, a multi-year plan for a kid and know that there's ownership of that. Fewer transitions for students. You do get some time back with not having to do necessarily as much community building and transitioning into that next year, and that's often used to add something into the programming, to get creative. Some of the concerns have been the social piece with students particularly being in a smaller school. And then I would say the big one really has been that with Common Core and with NGSS, the influx of updated curriculum, of increased rigor, our teachers are teaching two years' worth of curriculum. And so when we moved over to the Common Core-aligned bridges, it was that they were learning an updated version of first grade bridges, then the updated second, and not getting to go back and do that first grade version right away and do those automatic refinements. So there is that piece of really managing two years' worth of curriculum and feeling like you don't go back to it quick enough to think about how you might specialize. So teachers are definitely having those conversations. And we, every year with placement, I think we do get some feedback and some inquiry around the practice of looping.
Would there ever be a model where you had the 1-2 loop and then considered breaking up the 3-4?
I think next year's study, we will look at a lot of different configurations, maybe just a 1-2 loop break, and then from 3 on, not looping. There are models where K is on its own, as it is now. And then there's a 1-2 loop, and then looking at the developmental kind of stage of what happens at third grade. Some schools have a single-grade third grade, and then they do a 4-5 loop, knowing that that developmental stage of your nine, 10-year-olds has a little more in common. So that's the research that we'll do, and we'll look at what the input is and look at a variety of models.
Thank you. That was just what I needed, because, you know, it's hard to, I don't, I think we probably got arrived right after that study was done, so I felt like there was, I didn't have that information before. And for my kids, you know, one school year is a huge, in their life, of course, their life, that's forever. Like, looking at that amount of time that they're in school, so the two-year loop seems like an eternity in some ways, so. But thank you.
Absolutely. And while I went over the highlights of it, I can't, there's a lot more data to that. So if you're interested, we can connect.
Yeah, it's really hard to find information online about looping. It seems like there aren't that many schools that talk about it online, so it's hard to find information.
Right.
So I was curious about what was going on in the district.
So in the district, it kind of runs the gamut. Heinsburg has a couple of teams that are looping teams. Shelburne has some teams that are looping, some straight grade.
Same with Williston. I think when the school's big enough, you have the advantage of being able to have multiple configurations in a single system, which is not something that Heinsburg and Charlotte have the flexibility to do, to the extent that the others do.
Right. Where I would say Williston, though, largely is from 3 through 8 in some sort of a looping version.
Or multi-age.
Or multi-age, right.
So that's interesting, it's 3 through 8 versus the 2, 3, 4.
Right. But there are 1-2s, they have some looping 1-2 teams, and that's just, it's the buildings. It's that the pre-K to 2 is in Allen Brook, and then 3 through 8, so the teams are, they're 3-4 looping or multi-age, and then either 5-8 looping or multi-age, or 5-6 and 7-8.
I had a couple of quick questions. So currently, at the end of a looping period, the second year, is it intentional that the kids are reconfigured so that there is, the same group does not go on into the next looping class? So that, that social aspect that you were speaking about, there's some intention around really breaking that up and breaking up the kids, is that correct?
Absolutely. So what our, our placement process really goes over about a six-week period. So we use the parent input form, which we have a pretty high return rate on, I would say. And then teams meet, just the team teachers, then they meet with special educators and specialists working in the classroom. We're really at the end of the placement process right now, so this week, teams are, they have, you know, loosely scaffolded lists of who they think the groupings will be going on, and they're meeting with the expressive arts and world language teachers as well to get their input, because they see them in different and unique situations. School counselors are very involved in that process. And then the parameters around it are really to strike balance. So the social piece, the friendships, a balance of just the diversity of student needs and strengths, you know, the number of students on plan. We really try to just even it out, so we have very heterogeneous, as high-functioning groups as possible.
Thank you. The one other question I had is if a family feels, at the end of the first year of two-year looping process, that the match is just not going well, that there are some real misgivings, what opportunity is there for that child to be placed into the other configuration? How might that run?
I think it's not unheard of. The process usually is a case-by-case basis, and it's done in consultation with the team of educators working with the student, with administrators. Hopefully, we don't get to the end of the year, and we're having that conversation. Hopefully, there's been a conversation going on throughout the year, so we can respond. But we will always act in what's in the best interest of the child and always partner with parents around that decision.
Great. Thanks.
So I'm just kind of curious about the process. You've done, you know, your process to get feedback from parents and teachers and stuff like that. We obviously have experienced firsthand, you know, with how we've been working it and sort of what refinements need to be made. I mean, is the survey that you did, does that give you any sort of consensus around what are things that are working well, or what couple of things you might fix? I heard you refer to research. I kind of feel like, and this isn't like a terribly scientific discipline, right? I mean, it's sort of soft, very soft data, and I might think we might have a better idea from our own experience in getting the feedback from people involved in the, you know, in the program, to be able to find tinnitus if we need to. I just curious sort of what the review process is actually like.
So I can't speak to the previous configuration study, because that was done before I had moved up here. I know that there was literature review. We, you know, we tend to rely on like ASCD, some good input, good educational research. But largely, I think the data is what drove it, was getting feedback from community, feedback from parents. There was a whole survey questionnaire that went out to parents, to students. I'd have to do a little more digging to get that actual tool, because it was the previous administration. But I would say what drove the decision-making was putting both the research and the feedback from our own community.
And when we do it again, we'll absolutely be gathering input from all the people who have been living it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it sounded, I mean, you know, if there were 20%, it sounded like parents who weren't so keen on it. Was it just one or two things that you can address, or, you know what I mean? Are you giving that level of, you know, sort of texture to the feedback that you know what it is? It's not just a number?
Right. Right. And that will be our intention, is to develop a tool that does give us, you know, broad program information, but then there are some specific aspects of looping or of multi-age that sometimes make a huge difference. So we absolutely will be looking to develop a tool like that.
Thanks.
So just before we close the principal's report, I wanted to just do some acknowledgements of some people who are either resigning or retiring, and wanting to just express our appreciation for their commitment and dedication to the children of Charlotte. And this includes Robin Davis, who has been our PE teacher, Alice Tregasor, who has been our art teacher, Leslie Williams, who has been our English Language Arts teacher in the middle level, Cindy Schnell, who has been our nurse, Galen Perkins, who has been our special educator. And I also want to acknowledge the services of Alicia Kurt, who will be moving on to Heinsburg, and acknowledge, also acknowledge Josie Palmer-Levitt, who will be moving on to the CBSD office. She's been our bookkeeper, and she'll be moving on. So thank you to all of those people for their contributions and dedication.
Thank you.
Just real quick, is the, I know this was a topic of conversation, either it's CBSD or CSSU, the nurse staffing sort of per pupil, is that being maintained at the same level?
The expectation is that we are maintaining a 1.0 nurse.
Okay, thanks.
And just one other question, you said for the up to 1 FTE for the PE teacher, is that, I was curious about the up to part.
When something says up to, that means that some people have sometimes a recall rights. So when a position opens up, it means that someone else might have a recall right. So there's.
To a portion of it.
To a portion of it.
Oh, so you might, yeah, okay.
Okay. And I also had a question for the Behavioral Systems Coordinator. I'm just wondering what kind of credentialing you're looking at for that, since that's, it seems like a very specialized position, and with all the emphasis that's been placed this year on, on looking in this area, improving this area, I'm wondering what kind of person you're looking for, and if you're finding, I don't know how long the search has been going on, but if you're finding that candidates are surfacing for this job.
So we actually, at the time of my writing this, we thought we would have posted by today, but we haven't yet posted.
Okay.
So just to give you that. And we're still, we're still working on all those pieces, because we keep thinking the same thing that you are. This is a very important position, and we want to get it right. And so we are also looking at what kind of credential we're looking for, and we have identified a number of pieces that may work. There is a social work, that's a social work in education piece, which is what Cassandra does have as well. That is one piece that could relate very well to this. And then we are also, we're looking for someone who has some teaching, a teaching license of sorts, and we're still brainstorming what other credentials might be the right match for a position like this. It's sometimes more of the experience as well, of what they come in with.
So your work is cut out for you.
Yes.
But that's good, that's good to have, some understanding of what you're thinking about as you're planning for this position.
And do the other schools have a similar position within their current?
I believe one other school does.
One other school does, yeah. It's a good question. I think everyone at some level is looking at their system of support for kids who struggle socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. And at least one other school or district has kind of a hybrid social work, behavior systems type position. The other schools have some version of folks surrounding their student support center. One school does have a Behavior Systems Coach, I think is the title. That one, that position is a little less focused on social work and more focused on the systems development consultation. So similar veins, and lots for them to think about and think, oh, well, you know, what's everyone else doing?
Right. Well, it's an opportunity with the district to be able to think about how to best support our students from above, and then what that looks like as individual, and maybe collaborating that social work, you know, piece or the educator piece of it, and, you know, spread it around a little bit.
One of the things that we probably talked about at the CSSU board a few months ago is the, one of the things that we did within the special ed side of the budget in order to keep the new building-based special ed director, who's a .5, in order to keep them more physically present in the building, even though we can't increase the FTE, is we used a vacant position to bookend, to make a 1.0. And that is a CBSD Behavior Systems Coordinator position, which is that district-wide lens to support the individuals in all the buildings. So that will be a new facet of the job, and your Cassandra Townsend, who is your, who will be your new building-based special ed director, is also that person. So she brings great expertise. So it'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. The CBSD debrief, it, from our meeting this evening, it sounds like there are at least three primary areas of focus right now. One is that the, the new board is working on unifying policies across all of the districts. As a unified district, it's obviously important that all schools are following the same policies. So that's, I presume is quite an intense process to review all of those policies within each school and to look at where there may be some differences in how to shore those up. The second area of current work is the current contract process, which is ongoing. And it sounds like there's a lot of work going on there. And third, that the board is gearing up to take on the full responsibility of being the unified board going forward. I think the official start date is July 1, is that correct? So it sounds like a lot of activity currently. The CSSU debrief, I'll just ask if there are any questions about that, or it's, there's information within the packet, so I don't know if anyone has anything they want to raise about that. Okay. And the third quarterly financials, anything, Barbara Ann, that you'd like to focus on with that?
We're $46,734 better than budget. That's always good news, right? And that's better than, I think, where we thought one of our reports said we were going to be. And just one piece to highlight is that we did transfer $11,000 to the Food Service Fund to cover anticipated deficit. And we're doing well with that number.
I did just, I wanted to ask about the food service budget in the sense that I'm wondering if the deficit is due to just unforeseen expenditures that are difficult to forecast because of fluctuation and I'm not sure what food pricing, or, because if I'm reading the statement correctly, it looks like there's some projected concerns about deficit. So I didn't know if this was also a, an accounting issue in terms of maybe this, the budget needs to be reconfigured for food service? I'm just wondering what the thinking is around kind of what's going on in this, in this particular area, because it sounds like this is the one area that's, it's been harder to nail down.
So the cost of food absolutely has continually to go up. The number of students at Charlotte has gone down, even though percentage-wise, we do pretty well with having a nice percentage of students who will purchase, but it is less. And when, so you're dealing with, you're trying to serve a smaller number of students, and prices are up, and you just don't get the efficiencies. So that's the big picture. But I think if you, what you're asking is if we know that we're already going to be anticipating a deficit, why aren't we planning ahead? We already planned some of it ahead. There's, I think it's about, let me see if I can find the exact number, sort of 10,000 that's regularly shifted over from the regular budget.
It's a structural thing. It happens every year. I don't understand why that is, but ever since I've been on the board, it's just a thing. Having said that, now we're going to be a unified district, so among the many things that might benefit from that scale is the food service.
Yes, being able to buy in larger bulk and.
And we do, I think, you know, my own opinion, but I think Elizabeth does a very good job of trying to keep it healthy and, you know, source different things that are better options for the kids. So I think that's just something that we attach a value to as a board historically and are willing to support.
That's helpful.
I wonder if there's just a different way to plan for meals, because, you know, I don't know if you, I'm sure she has looked at it, but, you know, is it, do people purchase meals based on what is on the menu, or is it convenience, or, you know, are the majority of people who buy the hot lunch, is that, you know, five days a week? Like, is there a way to just sort of know, like, and plan that this, I'm sure she does that, because that's her field.
So she does a lot of things to increase. One small thing that made a huge difference in the purchase of breakfast is that she moved the cart upstairs to be able to provide easy access for students to purchase breakfast. It, the numbers went up. And so we're talking about how to do that for the K4, where we'll have a cart also available. We'll have to talk about how could that work and talk to the teachers about that. But there's ideas always floating about how to increase it. But even so, those ones, that's not $11,000 worth of change. Running a system at a school of our size, that's, this is what it's going to cost. And we have looked at, you know, do we use a more centralized system and bring the food in? We have looked at all different kinds of models. We looked at how we would have a heating and serving station versus a full kitchen, and we've looked at every piece, and we've come back to this thoroughly. We've looked at this, yeah. It just, this is the cost.
Yeah. Thank you. And Barbara Ann, do you have anything you would like to speak about regarding facilities?
So facilities are still where they were last, which is where we have a project that you approved that we open, which is a west entrance improvement project. It is not scheduled until the, after July 1. So there wouldn't be any, anything happening before then. But again, the purpose is to make it more welcoming, to make it more safe, and to be more efficient around heat and energy costs. And all those things will be well-accomplished by an update in that area.
Going forward, are you going to have a representative from the Charlotte, from one of the Charlotte board members on the facilities committee, or I'm just wondering how that's going? Because you've had a board member on facilities, right?
Great question. I think that'll be something that as a restructure, we'll figure it out.
Right. Some of it will be because CBSD will have a facilities director, once Jean, that's okay, once Jean comes on board, that will be her hire. And so that person will start to figure out what all of those procedures and representation and all that will look like, so.
I see.
To be determined.
That's great. It also feels like an area that fits, I don't know what you think, but fits maybe naturally into the community meetings that you've been organizing, because I, my guess is that people would love to have some opportunity. Because I, my guess is that people would love to have some opportunity sometimes to have input into what those, what you're planning or what needs to be done.
Absolutely.
Or anything like that, so. Very good. Uh, Discussion Matters, 6.1. Charlotte District Discreet Items for CVSD Consideration, thank you.
Um, this is just a chance for, I'll take an example of it. It's a chance for this board to give the CVSD board a heads-up about anything idiosyncratic or quirky to Charlotte that they need to be aware of. The example that, um, that we talked about is, uh, the Williston School Board buys bagels for their teachers every year on teacher appreciation. They wanted to make sure the new board knew that. Uh, Joan Lenis on the CVU Board does an ice cream social for their teachers. And so it's really just a chance for this board to remind or, and I'll take notes and just generate a quick list. Is there anything unique to Charlotte like that? So it's, this is small scale. This is not, you know, large scale. You've got reps on the board for the large scale, but is there anything you want to make sure the CBSD Board doesn't forget?
So it would appear that we have been a miserly board.
I know. You're not the only ones. Heinsburg was like, we don't do bagels.
I'm not sure that we have, uh, anything to pass forward other than maybe the recommendation that this, that we, that the new board do something.
They like that idea, okay.
Yes, please have them do something.
Well, the board does, every year they, they do like a, uh, parent of the year or some type of.
No, shucks, is that?
No, at C, at CCI, it was one last year or the year before. They, the board nominates and then presents, I think it's a parent of the year.
A volunteer of the year?
A volunteer of the year. Mandy Coskin was one one year. I was another one.
Yeah, and I remember Kristen looking for nominations, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that comes from the board, correct?
And we probably do it on the day when we do the retirement gifts on June.
Yes.
You do also purchases of mums in the beginning of the year?
We did.
You see?
magically they appear because I have no idea who provided those mums, but.
Not saying that it has to continue. I mean, I'm just trying to think of what the board has had responsibility to try to decide. I mean, it's always hard to try to find somebody, which is, because everybody does such a phenomenal job. Barbara Ann, usually the, the volunteers are on the board or on the PTO or.
That's a really good, that's, that's really good. I didn't realize that was going on.
So on June 12th, that's when this volunteer will be recognized by the board?
Have you picked one yet?
No, I'm just saying that this, we'll talk after.
Yes.
Nominations for the year.
Thank you for prompting that because I, I wasn't aware of this tradition. It's, it sounds great. So maybe we'd like to pass that on too.
Or, I mean, just discuss it up. I mean, sometimes you have to kind of relook at things and say, is this something worthwhile to continue? Or tweak it in some way or have it be looked differently? That's always an opportunity.
Yes. Okay.
And then with them, and they speak at graduation, right? The board usually typically speaks at graduation, is that right?
Board chair.
All these things you didn't know about Jeff.
Which, uh.
I think the first year was very brief, right? And the second year, he did a much longer speech last year, right?
You know, the only thing anybody remembers last year was the, uh, class speaker, eighth-grade student speaker.
The student, yeah. I mean, it doesn't have to continue again. I mean, you could just say, you know what, this is a new, new normal.
I thought it was great having Mark say some things last year. I thought he did a great job. He really did have a.
I was thinking of two years ago. Kid stole the show.
Yes, yes, that's exactly right. So it was very brief, Mark's first year, but it was much lengthier last year, do you remember? So.
Well, and I, I need to set time with you both to have some conversation about graduation and the awards ceremony too. We should also.
Yeah, yeah, that we should talk about that, yeah.
Right. And, uh, I, I think, I don't know what your schedules are like, but if you're able to come to that, to the awards ceremony, it sounds like that's a really important, uh, day.
So that's, um, the 12th during the morning, the all-school assembly, is that right? That 10, in multi, multi-purpose room? And so last year, I don't think any of the people who retired were present. So that puts somebody in a very awkward position because the student body was ready to thank this person and they didn't appear. And it was like name after name on the list. So, um, maybe we can ensure that everybody's down there to receive their incredible gift.
Yes.
Really good gift this year. And, let's see, what else? I, maybe we should talk about this later, but graduation, it just always seems awkward to me that they shake hands with people they don't know first, the school board members versus all the teachers. But, I mean, I, I don't know if it's appropriate to shift it to the word last or something. It just seems like all these people have known them their entire lives and then, but they start out shaking the hands of complete strangers, or at least in my case. Could sit someplace else.
Now, that would be a good discussion for us to have in planning. We'll set a time for that.
What's tricky about that in terms of the ceremony part of it is that if it's four or five board members, that's discreet and they shake the hands. As soon as they're with the teachers and it comes up, they get lost in the crowd. I mean, I've, I've observed it. And so you don't really want to curtail that because that's the honest emotion of, you know, oh, I just ran into my favorite teacher. So it gets buttoned up and people go around. And so to try to go from that to shaking four hands just doesn't, that's the piece.
Maybe they practice with us their handshake and everything.
Right. Looking forward to that favorite teacher.
All right, uh, 7.0 Action Matters, we have no Action Matters this evening. 8.0 The Consent Agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
So move, the second.
Second.
Okay, Consent Agenda is approved. And, uh, that concludes our, our meeting and our last board meeting for the local Charlotte School Board. Thank you to everyone. I don't know if any of the directors have anything they'd like to say before we call for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Sue, for joining us the last few times. And, um, thank you for all of the time and effort you put into our presentations. It's really fantastic.
I'm just to echo that. The presentations this year have been stellar and the work goes without saying, it's, it's been extraordinary. Thank you. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
In a second. We are adjourned.
All right.